I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. I believe first now I would turn over the meeting to Mr. Fred Johnson, our Board Attorney for Election of Officers.
Madam Chairperson, members of the Board. Board Policy 2200 provides that in the December meeting, the Board of Education will elect a chairperson and a vice-chairperson to serve for a term of one year. The floor is now open for nominations for the position of chairperson. Do I hear any nominations? Mr. Robertson has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will declare nominations to be closed. I will ask for a motion to elect Mr. Robertson by acclamation. Do I have such a motion? Motion by Mr. Bryant. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Rogers. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Congratulations, Mr. Robertson. You were elected as chairperson. The floor is now open for nominations for the position of vice-chairperson. Do I have any nominations?
I make a motion to nominate Mr. Dwayne Bryant for vice-chairperson.
Mr. Bryant has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare nominations to be closed. I ask for a motion to elect Mr. Bryant as vice-chairperson by acclamation.
I make a motion and nominate Mr. Dwayne Bryant for vice-chairperson by acclamation.
Motion by Mrs. Knight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robertson. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed likewise? The motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Bryant. Also, in accordance with the traditions and policies of the Board, each Board member will be asked to reaffirm the Code of Ethics for Board of Education members, and there will be a form distributed during the meeting for your signature to so confirm that affirmation. I have concluded my short tenure as chairperson of the Board. Mr. Robertson, the gavel is now yours.
Thank you. I think at this time, we will take a five-minute recess to reorganize. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. And I'd just like to begin by saying that I feel very honored and humbled by being elected as chair. I want to thank the Board. And my goal is going to be is to perform my duties as well as Ms. Knight performed hers for the past year. She has been an excellent chairman, chairperson, and we really appreciate what she's done and the time and effort she's put into it. And I look forward to serving the Board. And I also want to thank our administrators and staff. Over the first year that I've been on the Board, I've learned a lot. And I've come to find out that we really do have the best, I think, the best staff and administration from here at Central Office all the way to the schools to everybody involved. We have a really great group of people that work hard, and we really appreciate what everybody does. So I look forward to serving my time as chairman. Mr. Bryant, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'd like to say that I agree with everything Vaughn said. I really appreciate the Board having faith in me to nominate and vote me as vice-chair so that I can help Vaughn when I can. And as far as our staff and everything, from the top to the bottom, I've always said it when I was running, I'll say it again, we've got the best here in Stokes County. And I appreciate the job that each and every one of them does. We all who have some great parents and great kids. Our kids, I mean, you see awards every time you turn around. We're in here doing awards to the kids because we just got great kids. And I want to see them grow and get a better and better education than they could anywhere else. And I think we're offering that in Stokes County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. So we need a approval of our agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve agenda and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? That brings us to our good news section. Is that Mr. Rogers?
Good evening, Board. Tonight, we have two things on our agenda to honor some of our students. The first is where the first group of students we're going to recognize is those who had posters at the North Carolina School Board Association 2021 Elementary School Poster Contest. We had several students to get honorable mention, and one was a second-place winner. So when I call your name, you will go and stand beside your art project or your art poster with Mr. Rose. So we had one second-place winner, Addison Young. All of these are students from Poplar Springs Elementary, so I won't keep saying the same thing. Honorable mentions was Blaze Hobson. Carson Duggins. Jolene Livingston. Hannah Duncan. And Kylie Hunter. We'd also like to recognize the art teacher at Poplar Springs Elementary who worked with our students on their posters, Ms. Carson Rogers. Congratulations to all of these students and to the teachers and staff at Poplar Springs for supporting them.
And so we're clear, there were over 400 entries. Now, this is over half of the top 10.
Oh, you're right.
No, 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 no.
Now, look this way first, and then I want you to look with your parents, okay? All right, here's the first one. One more big on the smiles, good, pretty smiles. Congratulations. Let's see if your parents need you anymore, okay?
Great job, guys. Good job.
Congratulations to all these students. And I do want to make one correction. It's, as I said, Carson Duggins is Kason Duggins. Just correcting. Congratulations. Our second recognition tonight is for our district Christmas card contest. We have recognition at the elementary level, middle school level, and the high school level. For at elementary, we'd like to recognize Ally Joyce from Sandy Ridge Elementary School, 5th grade, Lisa Atkins. She's the daughter of Jonathan and Samantha Joyce of Sandy Ridge. Okay. At the, I don't believe she's here tonight, but we'll make sure to get her her certificate. At the middle school level, we had Rachel Cottle, Chestnut Grove Middle School, 8th grade, Justine Luzwick is the art teacher there, and the daughter of Deborah Cottle of Pinnacle. Okay, don't see her either, so we will recognize them. We'll make sure they get their information. And then last, we have high school Kaylee McGlamery. And that is West Stokes High School, 12th grade, Gatlin Hyatt is the teacher, daughter of Dana McGlamery. I don't believe any of those are here tonight, so we will make sure that they get their certificates and their awards. And great job to them all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McGee. And again, congratulations to all the winners. The artwork was great. They did a really good job. Okay, now we move on to public comments. Mr. Johnson, do we have any public comments for tonight? Okay. As we move on now to our consent agenda, the approval of the work session minutes for November 29, 2021, and approval of the COVID masking policy. So do I have a motion for consent agenda?
I make a motion for the consent agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that brings us to our discussion agenda, discussion of the draft calendar for 2223, the school calendar, I think. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Board members. I want to take time to discuss and update you on where we are with our 2022-2023 traditional school calendar. Our calendar committee met last Tuesday and had a very productive meeting that was well represented by a number of stakeholders from elementary to middle and high, including teachers and other staff members as well as parents. We had a really good, really good conversation and discussion, and the committee decided on two draft options that you have in your packet this evening. I also have placed at your workspace a two-page document that includes the calendar requirements per the General Assembly and North Carolina DPI that we are to follow, as well as a breakdown and comparison of both calendar options 1 and 2. As you have, I hope you've had a chance to review these before now, but just so you'll know, both options 1 and 2 contain many of the same workdays and annual leave vacation days. The main distinction between the two, and it really pertains more to our high schools, is that option 1 does not allow our high schools to finish their first semester prior to Christmas break. However, it does provide balanced semesters, which is, also has advantages for our staff and our students. As you can see there, the balanced semesters are 88 days the first semester and 87 days the second semester. Option 2 does allow our students to finish their exams prior to Christmas break. However, it is extremely unbalanced, with 77 days in the first semester and 99 days the second semester. And just for reference, this year, we have 81 days in our first semester and 95 days in our second semester. And we have heard from numerous high school teachers that it's really challenging to get the content taught in such a short semester from some. And so shortening that even more could be problematic. But, and as you're well aware, we have very little flexibility and control over when we start. The earliest we can start according to the legislation that is in place currently is August 29th next school year. So that is the reason for such a short semester. We certainly value the input of all of our staff and our parents, especially our high school folks when it comes to this decision. And so we will go back to our high school folks and other committee members to get their input prior to coming up with a final draft and a final recommendation to the Board of Education. Another thing that I wanted to mention is the number of workdays. As listed on the calendar options in front of you, there are two required teacher workdays. And as we try to balance the need for professional development and collaboration across our district, as well as try to understand the need for autonomy at the school level, we recommend that the district require three days as opposed to the two that are listed. And those days would be August 18th and 19th, and November the 8th. And again, those will be set aside for professional development, district-wide collaboration, and communication. The required day on June the 8th that's listed on your calendar will be removed and given back to the schools, along with two additional required days, which they could place throughout the year as they best see fit. Please note that all schools will still have six required workdays throughout the school year, three that will be set by the district, and three left up to principals and school improvement teams to decide on. I'll take any questions that you have at this time.
I'll real quickly also add, originally when the calendar committee met, we were in play with five remote days, which have since been removed, but they're not going to be available as of today.
Correct.
We will make the November 8th a remote day in front of the House, not to be examined in before Christmas.
And I'll let Dr. Rice speak on that. He's spoken to some superintendent friends, I believe. I don't want to speak for him about those days, so I'll let him speak more about those.
Well, as Mr. Rogers said, you're aware that last year and this year, we were given last year and this year, we were given options of remote days. This year, last year was unlimited amount. This year, we were limited to five. We assumed that would be the case going forward, but they have since written that into legislation that they're no longer allowed to be planned days. There is some question as to whether or not they may be allowed for inclement weather moving forward. Superintendents are fighting for that because we don't like the options when you get late in the year and get snow of Saturdays or extending the school year when people already have plans. And so we know that neither of those are great options. We also understand the need for snow days. And, you know, there's something magical about waking up to four or five inches of snow and wanting to go play in it, and we support that as well. But sometimes we get these events that last three, four, or five days, and we need to get back into school. Otherwise, we're going to be into Saturdays and things like that. So we hope those are allowed in the future, but it does limit us with some professional development days and things like that, like we're using right now for letters, that we are not having those five in the calendar as of the end of this year would be the end of them. End of June, they go away from being scheduled into the calendar at least.
Okay, any comments, Mr. Rogers?
No, I mean, I was NED Bennett, so.
And so, just so you're aware, we'll, at this point, we'll take the two draft options back to our committee as well as to our principals and have them gain input from their school improvement teams and staff members before bringing that back. And the calendar committee will make the final recommendation to bring to the Board will be our next steps.
Okay.
And just, I know you're aware, but just to say it publicly, the big difference in the unbalanced schedules is the high school. In elementary school, there's really no difference between the 80th day of first semester and the first day of second semester. It just flows throughout the school year. Middle school does have change in some exploratory classes, but the core classes, again, there's not a real change. But high school is a real change with exams. And we were grateful that the unbalanced calendar for the last year and this year have allowed us to get exams in before the Christmas break for the first time in a long time. You know, I know personally, I would not have thrived in a situation where I learned material on December 20th and then was tested on January 11th after only coming back to school for three or four or five days. And so feeling that that is unfair to children, we, to our students, we went with the unbalanced calendar. But the way this one is set up, it's a real unbalanced calendar. 70
77 and 99.
77 and 99, which is a real unbalanced. And we really want input from our high school staff, our administrators
and students.
and students before we go into this calendar, just before the Board votes on it. So we want to really get input from our stakeholders before we come back to you for a final vote. Because that could really have an impact, again, one way or the other, whether a break before exams or a 77-day semester. So we want to make sure that we get a lot of input for you before you make that final decision.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said 77 and what?
99.
For the first one?
77 days, yes, for the first semester and 99 for the second semester.
But that's calendar option two.
Yeah, so that is calendar option number one. I mean, excuse me, two.
Option number two.
Calendar option one is 88 and 77.
88 and 77?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, 77. And then I wanted to ask a question.
I'm sorry, no, I apologize. 88 and 87 for option one. Option two is 77 and 99.
So 88 and 87?
Yes, ma'am, I apologize.
Okay, now, I wanted to ask you, what were the numbers that we dealt with this year?
This year, there were 81 days in the first semester and 95 days in the second semester.
81 and 95.
Yes, ma'am.
So is it the high school principals and the teachers that are kind of leaning toward not having exams before Christmas?
Well, I think there's been some concern made in just that, and some content are impacted more than others in that trying to squeeze that amount of content into a shortened semester can be challenging.
For example, let's say you have a science class. You could, may teach the content just fine in 77 days. But those extra four days that we have this year, or an extra 11 days that you could have in that calendar, may give you time for more lab work, which reinforces the learning with hands-on learning. Where in a 70-day semester, they may not feel they have the time necessary to devote to all the additional labs. So that's a brief example of how that could impact learning for students.
Where the even on the even on that option one calendar
I don't have it either. I don't have this one.
Okay, I don't know if I got it shuffled during the reorganization or not.
Maybe soon.
Yeah.
It's on the backside of the printed two pages.
That option one calendar, the grading period ends January the 20th. So we will still have a couple of weeks there after we came back from the holidays that we could, that they could get caught back up and get in the groove of things before their exams, correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's not so bad. It's better than having the first semester ending like on January the 5th or 6th. At least it's on down to the 20th where there is some time to get back in the groove a little bit and get back up and going.
And those exams are the last five days of the semester.
So on option one, you're looking at exams starting on the 13th and ending on the 20th. And in option two, they would start on the 15th and go through the 22nd?
And I might want to add, some of the exam, or some of the classes that would be affected at the high school level are state testing that could affect employee incentives. So there is a component there to make sure we do justice to our staff.
Okay.
And I heard their packet book.
The other, the other way of looking at that, and if I was a high school principal, which I'm not, and I'm grateful for our high school principals and the job that they do, is that would also give you the opportunity to work your master schedule, to put EOC exams in the second semester with more days as an opportunity to increase the learning. And you could, if, how you work your master schedule, I mean, you have to work with your personnel too, and sometimes that gets tricky. But, you know, you could do more North Carolina final exams in the spring semester, and your EOCs backload those more into the spring semester to give you greater learning opportunities. and your E O Cs backload those more into the spring semester to give you greater learning opportunities that might could enhance scores. So it depends on how you're strategic and use your staff, and, and you may want to do honors courses in the fall where they're more apt to pass to begin with and do the other courses in the spring. So you could be strategic and try to work that to your advantage as well.
Majority of the committee wanted them before Christmas because there is that learning loss over those two weeks, and you have to take the next five days to recoup what we just did. That was the consensus of the committee, probably in the ninety-plus percentile. But the driver was the component of this could affect our educators' checkbook and our students' test scores.
If you had it before Christmas.
If you had it before Christmas, could possibly do that. Now, what he's telling us is it may not.
Depends on how you rank your master schedule.
Well, that worked for you. Can you make it work out?
Well, I, I've not looked at every school's master schedule with the personnel they have and where the E O Cs are to, to see. But i- if I'm a principal, I certainly would work to try to make that work to my advantage, to our school's advantage, our students' advantage, our staff's advantage.
So how about this, before the Calendar Committee meets, can the head of high schools and directors are looking to see if that is an option? Because that will play on the Calendar Committee's recommendations. And it would affect my, my board-based decision. I want to give everybody the appropriate opportunity to succeed.
And I was like, with the unbalanced, the schedule would be able to push out so. We tried to do it as much as possible. We didn't do it for every single E O C course, what we were able to do it for. I would say the majority of the standard.
Okay. Any, any other comments? Mr. Jones, you're going to bring us back a recommendation and a more final recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My one concern was November 8th, but then I realized that's an election day, and then the 11th is Veterans Day. You know, having that breakup right there in one week's time, but I understand those are both two things kind of unavoidable for sure.
Well, and we're on an off-year election. We, it may not be as necessary. This one, the, the even number of years elections usually have a greater turnout. We just want to make sure that that election day.
Being off on a Tuesday and then turn around and be an awful.
Right.
I don't know.
It, it does.
Yeah.
That's the reason we tried to make that a remote day. That wasn't available to us. But six of the schools are, are currently election places. So there will be a disruption in, in six of our classes, or six of our schools. And again, that, that happened somewhat this year with the primaries. The same thing will happen where there will be a, a little bit of disruption in our schools, but primaries usually don't have the turnout that the November election does.
Okay. All right. Mr. Jones, we'll look forward to the final recommendation from the, from the committee.
Sure, thank you.
Discussion agenda, item B, discussion of policy eight thousand series. Mr. Johnson?
You have received in the last couple of days, the eight thousand series. If you would review those before the next meeting, let me know if you have any questions. I'll also present my summary of the eight thousand recommendations at that time.
Okay. Any, any, anything in the eight thousand series that you know we need to pay particular attention to?
Most of it is just modifications to up, the policies being updated.
Okay. Okay. Item C, discussion of policy sixty-one forty. Ms. Cheek?
Good evening, Board. Thank you for allowing me time tonight to review policy recommendations regarding student wellness, which is policy sixty-one forty. The student, the School Health Advisory Council met last Thursday to review this policy and the associated administrative regulation and administrative procedures. We had a group of about twenty-five or thirty stakeholders present, representing a variety of departments, schools, partner organizations. And we spent a couple hours digging into all that is contained in this policy. What you have, tonight, you have the policy review notes that were provided by Mr. Johnson earlier in the year. You have a copy of policy sixty-one forty with the recommended changes in red, which were based on those review notes from, I think it was October. You have a copy of the administrative regulation associated with policy sixty-one forty and the current administrative procedures. And I think Ms. Buljack added those to your stacks when you arrived this evening. In looking at the policy, the School Health Advisory Council makes suggestions for minor changes as recommended in the review notes. The suggested changes can be found in the last paragraph of section B, where we recommend removing the parentheticals and updating wording to reference the administrative procedures rather than listing all of the nutrition promotion and nutrition education goals and strategies there in the policy. And then similarly, in the last paragraph of section D, we recommend doing the same thing, removing the parentheticals and referencing the administrative procedures. So those would be our recommendations for policy sixty-one forty. The School Health Advisory Council also recommended leaving the administrative regulation regarding do-not-resuscitate orders after hearing from our lead nurse, Karen Bean, who had assisted with establishing that administrative regulation several years ago. Most of our time with the School Health Advisory Council was spent in reviewing the administrative procedures associated with policy sixty-one forty. This revision will be a work in progress. There were several items where we needed to gather additional information, think about how to measure our work in some of those areas. Many of the changes the council recommended in the procedures revolved around wording, updating references to community organizations that may have changed or may no longer be active, adding statements that align with other policies, like in the tobacco section, adding references to vaping. And we will be continuing that updated work, updating work on the administrative procedures, and then providing you all data regarding our compliance and, and moving toward meeting those goals in the spring semester. One of the recommendations that came out of the school advisory council meeting that the board may want to act on was a request for water bottle filling stations in our schools. In both policy sixty-one forty and in the administrative procedures, it does reference water being available for students during the school day. And we're fortunate that some of our schools and their P T As and P T Os have been able to purchase bottle filling stations and have them installed in the schools. Others are using athletic coolers and sinks to allow students to fill their water bottles since the water fountains are currently not available for use due to COVID-19. And we would appreciate the board considering whether wa- bottle, water bottle filling stations could be added at schools across the district to ensure availability of drinking water. I know Mr. Jones has spoken with Mr. Goins about the possibility of adding water filling stations, and Mr. Goins has information about this possibility with him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These bottle filling stations are cooler-specific because we replaced the whole top and everything, so they have to fit that particular cooler. Another option, and this one is touchless. You just put the bottle under it and it'll fill. Another option is on the second page. This is for our older coolers. We looked at Pinnacle. This is one of our older coolers. That's not an option for that cooler. It's just not, they don't make one for that style. So this station here is the, is what we put there for that one. Again, that's at Pinnacle. The third page, this is how this, the, the first unit comes. They are around $700 each. That does include installation. That's just materials. If you look, turn the next page, it's the filling station that comes with the adapter kit. That's around $250 per unit. And then if you, the last page is if you buy the whole unit, that comes, that's going to be somewhere, I just looked at those online. They're around $2,000 if you buy it as a whole unit. Germanton was the first one that brought this to our attention for maintenance. Their P T A wanted to buy one to put in their school. So we did the investigation and actually found out that's when they had to be cooler, like it's cooler-specific. It's for an O E M, and then Pinnacle, she wanted to purchase the same thing. So as far as a cost here, the number of coolers we have, I haven't got that much information.
It looks like the third option is a dual purpose. It fills the $2,000 one. It still has the water fountain option.
That's the whole, yeah.
If you don't lose the water fountain option, you can do both.
You can do both. Even with the one at Pinnacle, if you look at that first page, that part is called the bubbler on a water cooler. That could be added to that one, but since it wasn't an option, we couldn't use our water coolers, we just took the bubbler off. Because I think that is the.
So if you have the base that works with the top, you would still have both options.
You still have both.
For the $700.
Yes.
$700.
But the second page.
By the whole set.
But if you do the second page, you won't have that option. That's just a bottle fill. You won't have the option to have the bubbler on it as well. But the other option, when you put this top on, the bubbler, the bubbler could be added back, just like on the last page. But the last page is if you had an older cooler and you wanted that touchless option, it's going to have replaced cooler and the water fill station. That's going to be around $2,000.
Do we have any idea what the mix is between old and new? The Halsey-Taylor place there? Okay.
No.
Yes. Fifty-fifty?
Well, see, there, we even have some Oaces water coolers. There's another brand out there.
Okay. Good thing we standardized.
Well, when you start talking about water coolers, you kind of have to buy a way the plumbing's laid out, where you have your water coming in, a drain and outlet. Some of the older ones you take off, you have to buy that style to fit back. They don't, it's not universal.
Okay.
And water coolers were basically put in when the schools were, so between nineteen fifty-five and.
We still got some at North and South that were put in when the school was built.
How many, how many coolers do you think we would need at each school? Would we want to replace each fountain that we have now with one of these? Or is it we just put two or three of these in, in a school and let them go by and fill their bottles? What would be your thoughts on that?
Well, me personally, I think if you do the second page, just did the fill stations and just get away from the bubbler where people are putting their mouths close to it. Those kids, I think, got the habit of having a bottle to drink with. This would be our most cost-effective option. And just we put those on all of them.
Wonder if the kid put the bottle up into the. And stuck their bottle up in.
Well, they can do that.
And it wouldn't contaminate?
Well, they could do the same thing here with their hand when they touch this one here. I mean, it's just a.
Well, that's what my next question was. This one, do you have to have a specific bottle?
No.
Is it just like the regular water bottles you buy?
You see the circle in the middle looks kind of like a bullseye? You just put your hand up there and the water will come out.
Oh, okay.
It's just a sensor, so when that sensor covers, it, it, the bottle, the water.
So the bottle wouldn't necessarily touch the top of it?
No.
But it may on the second.
It could.
And it could on the first.
It could, it could, the first one too, if they, if they put it up high enough. They could still touch the top.
Yeah.
Basically goes down according to the kid.
Would an elementary child be tall enough to do that?
That's at Pinnacle right now.
That's at Pinnacle in the pod.
And Germanton, correct.
And so like a five-year-old can do that.
I can't answer that question. I don't know. I hadn't had any complaints.
I'm just saying, you know.
It looks like they would walk around to the side and just hold their bottle up against the wall. Yeah, it's going to sense it.
And yeah, the water coolers are set lower at elementary schools.
Yeah.
And at Pinnacle, they have steps at some of theirs. They got a couple of steps in front of them so the kids could get up and get to the bubbler. Because they have to get here. If you had the bubbler here, they'd have to get there to drink anyway.
Yeah. So it's good to know that you feel like they can reach that.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Here's my concern. If we go to the point where we replace every bubbler, how do we account for the child that forgot their water bottle?
Well, and, and that would be, several of the COVID rules are up, are optional right now. And at the same time, we're, we're trying to be careful as we back off some restrictions, not to back off of too many at one time. Because, you know, if the numbers do spike, you, you kind of want to try to isolate to see what maybe had a more of an impact than something else. But we have had the conversation about unbagging water fountains and going back to normal using those as well. Now, with that, they've been sitting for a year and a half, and they need to be cleaned out, pumped out. Maybe a couple of hours worth of work on each individual water fountain to do that. So it's going to take a, a timeline process to do that. I would like to see a mixture in the schools. Some water fountain filling stations, some regular filling stations. If some can be, you know, again, the cheapest way is just the, the $250 route. But when you have the other, you do have the option of both. But I would like to see a mix and to put some stations in every school strategically where kids congregate, but then to still have the option of water fountains. I know that, you know, out Christmas shopping, different things, I, I have drank out of water fountains in the last few weeks. Other places have started putting them back into service as well. And, and I think we need to start moving toward that later on in the semester after we do mask optional right at the beginning of the semester, see how that goes, and then start working toward getting some of our water fountains back in, in business as well.
I'm just hesitant of an all or nothing.
Well, and, and I am too. I, I don't think, I think that that would be slightly overkill right now to do it everywhere. But I do think that trying to get, because water bottles are not going away either. People enjoy carrying around those, and so to have a couple of filling stations at each school, I think it would be an advantageous situation anyway.
Well, and just in his first picture here, the, the water cooler to the right, it still has a bubbler on it.
Right.
So that'd be one. If you put that one back in play, they would have the option there. I'm thinking of like North and South and C and D building. You have two coolers, one on each side. You could do, put the spout on one, leave the other optional. I mean, it's a regular bubbler, if you want to do that.
You know, another thing too is a lot of these high schools, like North and South to be specific, have several different buildings like Mr. Goins was talking about. If we put one of the touchless up around the lunchroom area when they go to lunch and stuff, where they could get water there, and then put the spouts in some of the other buildings, I think that would work good. But I really believe that we'd be better off to put a touchless in the lunchroom areas.
Well, they would be congregating there before school. They come in there again at lunch. And most people are not draining multiple bottles of water a day, so that would give them a chance to get refilled. You know, where the most people congregate. And that's what I was saying. If some strategic areas, put some of the, the more expensive ones, I think would be fine. And then go with the, either a cheaper option or just a water fountain. And you can stick your, your thing at a regular water fountain and get some water in there as well.
Yeah.
Now, the ones I don't have a cost on is West Stokes. If you're familiar with West Stokes, they're recessed back in a while. And I did look at some of those, and those prices are all over the board depending on the model cooler you had to put something like touchless like this in those places. So you really have to get the model number and research which unit would replace the unit that we have. So I, I don't have that one.
So, Mr. Goins, maybe you and Ms. Cheek want to come back to us with a recommendation?
What, what I would like to do is when we start looking at capital budget for next year, is to come in with a full recommendation at that point of what it would be. Now, a- again, if the board would say, no, we want to get a faster jump on this, that, that's okay. Currently, again, we are using coolers. We do have some stations. There, there is access to water now, but I, I would like to bring this as part of our capital budget, give them some chance to do some research, work with the principals, work with the schools, and come up with a, a, a good cost, a reasonable cost.
a reasonable cost projection and, and then go with it at that time, is what would be my recommendation.
Well, and where are we, uh, standing on our ESSR funds as far as like the ionization and stuff like that? After Mr. Goins' presentation and everything, it really bothered me because we could be setting ourselves up for a lawsuit.
Well, a- and that would be a quick way that, you know, again, we're gonna have several different money sources, whether the athletic grant, semester money, our regular capital, to try to figure out what projects we need to do and then which funding source we could pull it out of.
Right, I was just thinking we could maybe do it a little quicker, whatever, if we use the ESSR funds.
And that's, and that's, even if we did it during our capital budget time, which is normally around February, March, when we're looking at that, the ESSR money could be used immediately rather than what, if we waited to try to do it out of capital, waiting till July.
Right.
We could go ahead and get started.
Well, the other option is when you take the bags off the water fountains, if we don't have a COVID spike, we're back to where we were pre-COVID.
Yeah.
Well, personally, I would like to go ahead, maybe like Mr. Bryant mentioned, look at the ESSR funds, let them gather info by the first of the year, move forward with it by the end of January. I feel like it's an issue that's been hanging over us now, you know, for a year and a half or more, I don't wanna put it off to another school year, that's just me. You know, I'd like to go ahead and see it addressed, you know, I've had a handful of parents reach out and say, hey, just didn't get a good situation with water, you know, like you said, most, you know, I send water with my kids every day, but as far as how they're able to refill, you know, it's, some schools have the big jugs and that gets costly, go to the office, get more water. You know what I mean?
It may be our second meeting in January where we can have everything, again, people have scheduled some time off over the break and, and we're right here at it. But we could certainly get started at it and, and not try to delay it.
Yeah, second meeting sounds better, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I make the motion we do it the first meeting, why y'all?
Thank you, Mr. Goins, and just bring us back a recommendation, uh, when you get that together, then we'll, we'll take it back up with the board and, and try to make a plan to go forward with that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goins, we're getting that information so quickly. Um, again, I, I plan to, um, come back with updates, um, on how we're meeting goals on the administrative procedures in the spring. I would ask, uh, that if we could to move Policy 6140, um, those minor changes to the action agenda for our next meeting or the second meeting in January. Um, just so that 6,000 series can be finished up. Any questions about Policy 6140 and the recommendations from the School Health Advisory Council?
Okay, anybody have any questions for Ms. Cheek?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I sat on that meeting and, um, you know, it was very informative and I enjoyed hearing everyone's input, cause it was parents, it was educators, um, counselors, uh, principals, it, it was really a, a nice variety of people, and Ms. Cheek did an excellent job leading it.
Thank you.
She did. And, um, anyway, I learned a lot, and that committee, correct, will be coming up with the screener questions, um, for students. And maybe that's something, um, we could share with the board, that piece of it as well.
Absolutely. Um, a- and what Ms. Knight is, uh, referencing is, um, screeners to gauge social and emotional, um, needs of students. Um, and there are lots of screeners out there, um, and I did ask School Health Advisory Council that I would like them to help, um, look at different options. Um, because there are lots of different options out there, a- and then would certainly bring those, uh, to your attention, um, before we implemented those.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Think so, thank you, Ms. Cheek.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, discussion item D, the discussion of the interactive panel update, Ms. Barker?
Hey, before I get started over there, I did wanna point out, um, we were in the schools and, uh, we, this of course is how we start out, we stage it with the panel by the door. And I thought it was so fitting that it was in front of this bulletin board. It's not about the best, it's about being better than you were yesterday, and I think teachers have had to really, um, really focus on that because either we're taking out something they're used to using, they're used to their smart board, they're used to using that, their comfort zone is right there, and we are taking it out. And we're putting something brand new in there, so, um, this was so fitting, I wanted to share that with you all, and then, of course, this is our staging room, how we start, and then we just start sending out. So, um, I'm gonna let this run. I thought we were saying.
We need to have all these out here soon.
Okay, as we've been in the schools, we've tried to snag pictures, and of course, we don't have everyone, but we've, we've gone in and we've tried to snag pictures of use. Um, as you can see from the handout, schools completed, we have completed all schools with the exception of King, and we're starting King tomorrow. Um, we do have a to-do issue slash fix-it punch list that we're gonna go back to after we get this, um, finished with King to, um, go along and get, put that in. The, also the tabletop, the, um, tabletop panels, the 65-inch, they come in later. So as we're winding down, we're also gonna go ahead and get those in place as well. Um, just to give you a little bit about the process, our tech assistants, they go in, they remove the smart boards before the installers enter the rooms. We've tried to keep the, we learned by mistake, I'll be honest, at the beginning, we were taking down everything and going forward. We decided to leave the projectors up so teachers could still project, still had that comfort, cause hey, we've put something brand new in their rooms. Um, we've sent out videos, we've sent out training, but we also know that it's intimidating when you get a new device or a new piece of technology in your room, when you've got 25, 30 kids in front of you expected to carry out your lesson. Um, our tech assistants are staying about two to four rooms ahead of the installers. And if we have issues, as the issues arise, we also have the portable, the one on the stand there that we kinda shift around if needed, and we've had to do that a couple of times. Our tech assistants will be going back and removing the cabling and the projectors. So we've left that, we've wound it where it's not in the way, um, but we're gonna come back and, and get that taken down. Um, each panel, we've given them a wireless keyboard and mouse, and as you can see from slide to slide, we've got folks using Smart Notebook, the old software. We've got folks using the PC side, and we've had many folks say, man, thanks for getting that onboard PC, that's a game changer. So having that available on hand, having the Android side, they've got two options, they can, you know, go back to their desk, work on grading or whatever as they're going. And they still have that, um, teacher desktop, they, without missing a beat. Um, our tech team, they're going to classroom after the install, so we are in, um, imaging the computer, so we're putting our image on these onboard PCs. Um, we have them going in, we have them doing an Android mini-session with the teacher. Then we have another session, an onboard PC session. Now, we've been doing that a little bit one-on-one, and some schools have decided, hey, will you, will you do the onboard PC after school or during our planning period, so they've been able to do that. Technicians, they've been imaging, they've been enrolling them in command, um, this is not the training that the vendor will be providing, that's coming later. Now, we've had some sessions already with, um, the vendor. It's recorded, there, we've decided to do the Google Meet and record it, so teachers can be in their classrooms with their panel without an audience and try these things during their planning, after school, whenever they need to do it, that way I'm not gonna be embarrassed if I don't know how to do this or I won't ask a question, um, some folks are not as, um, comfortable asking questions in large groups. So having the small group, the one-on-one, we've had, um, scheduled, our techs have scheduled Google meets with these folks one-on-one and able to resolve some issues that, you know, it was just a matter of not knowing to do a certain step, so they've been able to do that. So we have been working diligent, diligently as a whole team, helping all folks. Um, we've had teachers in training, we've had teacher assistants in training, we've had principals in training. Um, we're handholding, we're doing the best we can to make them comfortable going forward. At the bottom of this sheet that I gave to you guys is a sampling of what we have completed for each school, so each school will have this spreadsheet. When we're finished, each school will have their own, so they'll have the inventory sheet right in front of them and kinda detailed notes of what took place with our technicians. So inventories training, um, inventories provided, there's also on our website, under the technology piece, there's a training, um, list of what I was already provided, the, the videos that we've sub- submitted for them to watch. And then, um, some notes that our media coordinators have created as well. I'm really, um, pleased, impressed with the way our teachers have really jumped on, and like I said, you can see, a lot, some of those are using the onboard PC side, some of them are using the Android side, some of them are still using the Smart Notebook. So I think we've allowed them so many options that hopefully some of the anxiety they had prior to getting it, um, has been gone, I hope.
Are you seeing some of that, are you seeing some of the anxiety lifting that, uh, once they, they're, they're getting more used to it? It looks like from the pictures that there is a wide range of, uh, applications that they're using.
Yes, sir. Um, we, and there's one particular teacher, and I'm not gonna name their name, they really did not want it, and pretty much told me they did not want it. But they are, um, they are a leader in their department in try, in teaching their other, other peers, it's, it's impressive.
A- and I will say that I watched a lot of anxiety go out the window. Uh, at two of the schools I went to, Pinnacle, when I visited there, had gotten theirs during the day. And I walked in just slightly after the kids left the building, and I wanted to, to see how bright they were in the classrooms and all of that. And the teachers were literally running from room to room. I just learned this, let me show you this, and then they'd, they'd take off and show somebody else, and I mean, the excitement that was going quickly overcame the anxiety of, oh my goodness, I've been using the last board for 10 years, I know a lot of, and I might not know every trick of the old board, but I know to get it to a race, I'll do a big circle and tap it in the middle. And, you know, I, I'm familiar with some of these things, and is this other going to do what I used to do? And the other one I went to was Nancy Reynolds, and they finished that up at the end of the day, and I was there first thing in the morning. And I mean, and they were already rocking and rolling with it, it, it was amazing, watching the excitement of the new, and I didn't see at, at those two schools, any anxiety. And then another school I went to, they had already been in for about a week, and it just looked like business as usual. And so I've not seen what, a- again, y- you hand me the brand new latest iPhone, it's gonna take me a little bit to remember, okay, how do I get my email on this one? How do I set up, how do I turn the beeper off so it doesn't go off in the board meeting? You know, th- there's always some of those little anxious things whenever you get new technology, but I've been very impressed at how much they've just enjoyed this and ran with this. And many people said, please thank the board for this, please thank the board for this, this is awesome, this is incredible. The clarity of these boards, i- and here, I don't know that we could take it for granted, I, we probably take it for granted. But like at Nancy Reynolds, there's some of those classes up there, and rightfully so, are made with wall-to-wall windows. Because of the views overlooking the mountains and everything are gorgeous, but they were murder on a smart board. And so it was hard to see them unless you cut off all the lights and cut off the blinds to try to dim the room. And the other day when I was up there, it was a sunshiny day, the blinds were open, you could see outside, and you could see everything on that board from anywhere in that classroom. And the sound quality is another thing, when they're playing videos or sound clips, it is as clear as a bell all throughout that room, it's not loud in the front and, and quiet in the back. It does a great job of carrying throughout the room, so I, I really want to commend the board on y'all's selection of a board because it, it really is an impressive piece of equipment.
And you can see from the clarity, a- and I think some folks are in such a habit of turning their lights down, um, you can see on some of these pictures that their lights are off. But there's no need to really dim the lights to see this board, so, um, I think their habits are turn, turn the lights off, cause we've not been able to see it really well.
How about the, uh, students?
Well, in some of the pictures, you can see the students are using, there's a cut, there's one picture, there's two students at the same time, they're at the board working.
But are the, are the students excited about them?
Oh, yes. They're excited, and they're showing teachers, I'm not gonna, they're, they're showing teachers how to use some things, and, and Dr. Rice used the phone example, and that's the very example I've used with some teachers, when I see the anxiety, I said, well, have you gotten a new phone before, and of course, they'll say, well, yes, I said, it's a big phone, it's a big phone, big tablet, you know, if you, do you know everything about your phone? And odds are, and odds are, probably all of us will say, I do not know everything about my phone. Um, they would say that, that you can use it, and so you're gonna learn, every, you know, every day's a new learning day, so you can learn something new about it.
Well, you mentioned students, when I was at Pinnacle, several of the teachers' children were there after school, I said, the other students have been dismissed. And they were sitting there, and they were like, we could both ride on it at once, and then another person said, well, let's, a third person, let's see how many can, and so they were excited, trying to figure out how many hands they could put on, I think there's 10 touchpoints.
20 touchpoints, six inputs.
And, and the smart boards were not, and so they were very much excited as to what they could do, uh, at different times, so I, I, the excitement, and again, Nancy Reynolds the next morning, uh, it, there was a lot of excitement all the way around.
It's exciting, and I, I will say, this would not be happening if we didn't have the tech team you all elected to ha- let us have as well, because they've really been working hard and, and going school to school and on, on site every time, and, um, it's been wonderful, so thank you all.
Well, we know it's a huge undertaking, but y'all have done a great job implementing, uh, we still got a ways to go, but you're doing a great job. How about the, the, uh, Chromebooks, the tablets, are they out?
The tablets have been delivered all but one school, and we should have it this week, so, and the, the pens and the cases should be with them, so, um, media folks are probably getting them in their inventory and ready to distribute, hopefully this week.
And those tablets are gonna be able to work with the, uh, just like ours do with this?
Yes.
Correct?
And you can see tonight, I just plugged it in, I, I did that kind of intentional too, I just, I plugged it in with HDMI cable and hit, and that's. So I di- I didn't cast today, so I did that intentional, so you could see that, I just plugged it in.
Could you have, could you have operated this from your desk?
I could have cast it, yes, sir. But like someone coming in, just wants to plug in their laptop if someone's presenting, or going to, if you guys are going to a classroom to share something, it's that simple. And each, each one came with a HDMI cable as well.
Any comments from the board?
Just thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
For ever seeing.
Just happy you could cast.
I know, I, I just, it's such a great, it's just a, such a huge improvement to our classroom. And, um, and I, and I, and I would think that the, the students would be very excited about it. Students are so in tune to the technology anyway, right?
Yes.
They're so far ahead of their parents and, uh, the, uh, technology that, uh, I'm sure they do help the teacher. I know my daughter at West Stokes, and, uh, she's told me they've had to help the teacher along a few times and help figure things out, and that's not to be, that's not unexpected.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm so excited that we were able to, at the ESSR funds, get the clear touch, cause I feel like that you, you know, really guided us on the right, um, board to, to choose. And then we're getting the, uh, Chromebooks too, and so really for rural county, we are really coming up in technology.
And so I really appreciate all the work you've done in your committee. Thank you.
I think it's a way the teachers can make the classroom fun again.
Yes, sir.
More exciting.
And we're on time and under budget.
That's right.
Because our tech team wasn't required to be what we anticipated funding, because they were able to do it with less manpower.
Yep.
My hat's off to everybody.
They're great, yeah.
Absolutely.
It's nice when you have people that can get the job done.
Yes, sir.
Real nice, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Uh, discussion item E, uh, discussion of state budget update, Ms. Moore? Discussion item E, discussion of state budget update, Ms. Moore.
I also have some good news that we can review tonight. We're still waiting information from DPI concerning some of the state allotments and salaries and this kind of thing. We have received some information and then a few days later, we get information that that's changed. So we're going to discuss tonight what we know as of today. You have this information in your packet, and I'm not going to read it, but I'm just going to touch some highlights. First of all, I want to talk about retroactive pay. That is going to be allowable if you were employed as of December 31. And that will not include any substitute pay in, in that retroactive pay. Any of our employees that receive longevity, the longevity will be adjusted. Also, our local supplement, we will adjust the one that we paid in November. We've been told by DPI that this adjustment cannot be made till at least January. I think that what we received today, they will give us probably from January to March, but we could not go ahead and do that in December. From there, I'll just talk a little bit about teacher and instructional support. The bachelor's degree scale, we've, we've received our salary schedules. And for example, just for your information, an A zero will make $35,460. That scale maxes out with 25 plus years at $52,680. That's kind of gives you an idea of the range. The step increases on the salary scales for the bachelors from 15 to 24 will make the same salary. And again, this is decided from legislation, and that's $50,650. So some of our folks from those steps will be making the same salary. There was an average of a 5% increase over two years. And that depends on which scale that the teacher's salary would fall on. That ranges from a $650 to a $2,680 range. This year, our psychologist, speech, audiologist, there's going to be a $350 monthly supplement that we've not been seeing in the past. And our school councils will see an additional $100 per month supplement. So that kind of talks about the salary schedule, the retroactive pay. We've got a lot of bonuses that we have to deal with, and that's where a lot of our information is still pending. But I do have good news that as of tomorrow, Dr. Rice, and after talking with him, and we found out from DPI that a bonus for our full-time employees, they could receive $1,000. And if you made under $75,000, you could get, receive $1,500. So I talked to Dr. Rice, and he agreed that since DPI said this can now be paid in December, we, he agreed that we could do so. And our employees will receive that tomorrow. So we're real excited about that. It will be prorated based on the percentage of employment. That was a little bit over a million dollars, that's what cost, the cost there. But one good thing is, it didn't matter if you paid from local funds or federal funds, we did receive state funds to pay for that. So that was a plus for our local budget. Also, a $300 bonus will come along. And again, this is where we've got to receive some additional information for teachers and instructional support employees. That's being received instead of a performance bonus for our teachers. There will be no performance bonus for grades three through eight on math or reading. The performance bonus for the AP and CTE, Mr. Sands is already working on that. And I think from today, he has about 11 that will receive the AP bonus. Our range will probably be from $100 to $400. The max could be up to $3,500, that's based on the performance of students. EVOS bonus, there will be a one-time $300 in lieu of the performance bonus. There's also called a COVID bonus, $1,000 for teachers and that's received COVID training. And that will be coming to us and funded through Estor federal funds. Again, we're waiting information. There's a low wealth recruitment teacher bonus, $1,000 for teachers signing. That will require a local match. So again, we'll have to come back to the board and discuss that. To allow a $2,000 bonus if we're able to match that with local funds. Federal funds cannot be used to match that. You do have to be employed after July 1 of '21 and still employed by October 1 of '21 to be eligible for the signing bonus. Principals will receive an $1,800 bonus, and again, that's in lieu of, of a performance bonus. Today, and this is not in any of your information, but today we worked on the PRC 174 Estor 2 School Nutrition, which is a retention bonus. And that deadline was actually tomorrow to have our plan and everything in. And after working with Mr. Sands and Mr. Jones today, and with the available money, we had an allotment of $40,456 that could be used for that. So we've gone back to March 1 of '21, excuse me, March 1 of '20 to determine that people that was employed with us during that time and still employed through the end of this school year could receive $700 on a prorated basis. Those that came into employment after, on July 1 of '20, we also will give them a $500 bonus because they were not here when we started in March, when all this kind of hit. So we tried to take that into consideration. And again, that will be prorated based on the percentage of employment.
All for school nutrition staff?
That will be for us.
And when would that be paid out?
We are going to pay that out in June because we want to be sure they stayed employed with us for the length of time to qualify for that.
That's wonderful.
It is, very good. We're tickled over that one.
Oh, yeah.
Salary increases, assistant principals get a step increase plus the increase consistent with the teacher scale. Principals will get a 2.5 increase over the next two years. Central office, a 2.5 increase over the next two years. Classified will get the greater of, they are mandating that the $13 per hour be implemented. And they get the greater either 2.5%, but let's just say a person in order to get to 13 is greater than 2.5, they will get more than that because they're required, we're required to pay the $13 per hour. In July, that's going to go to $15 an hour. And so that's going to affect us on our local budget when all that happens. Substitutes are required to be paid at least $13 per hour. I had listed in your information that the license rate is 105 with, minimum with a max of $161. Currently, we're paying 103. Unlicensed, 81, currently we're paying 80 there with a max of 161. Again, this is some information we'll probably review and then get back to the board. There is no retro back pay back to July for substitutes. The state's not allowing that. Other information, our hospitalization matching has come in at $7,018.92. And what that says for any of our employees that actually take the hospitalization coverage, this board has to match that much from, from the fund source that they're actually paid from. Retirement matching has gone to 22.89%. Also, the good news was the children with disability, the funding cap that was currently at 12.75 was increased to 13% of the ADM, and that's a plus for us. And then there's a new allotment that will go into effect 22, 23 that we've not been having, which is called a psychologist allotment. And we will be required to employ at least one psychologist. Downside of that is they're going to reduce our instructional allotment, which is where we pay our media, our counselors, our some in nursing, those support positions. And I understand that's going to be restricted, so we'll work through that as time comes along. Also, personally, there's going to be a change there for our teachers and supports, our media coordinators. They shall not have a $50 deduction like they do now if they provide a reason. We will have to get together and come up with something on reasons and come back to the board on that. And that does not retro back to July 1. That becomes effective November the 18th of '21. So I've roughly gone over a lot of information, and you can see there's, there's a lot to it. There's a lot that we're having to work through as soon as we can and funds are available. And we will try to get our employees as much as we can as quickly as we can. I'm just tickled that they will be getting the extra tomorrow. I think that's a plus, and we're pleased with that. Do you have any questions? I know I went over it pretty fast, but basically what I went over is in your package, so.
Any, any questions from the board?
How'd you say all that without taking a lot of breaths? That was a lot. No, thank you, Alfred, I understand you're, you're trying to hit a moving target while blindfolded in the, you know, let's see, but thanks.
And giving an example, when we first started out, Dr. Rice can tell you, got pretty upset over that because they were seeing our retroactive pay would not be subject to retirement. And that's just not fair because if the budget had been approved, we would have paid those people and it would have been subject. So even, he can respond to that, I know he's sending some information complaining about that, and it has gotten changed. So that's going to be a plus for our employees. And Dr. Rice, you can ask whatever.
I, I don't know if I want to be on the record saying what I said. DPI is not returning my phone calls right now as fast as they used to. No, I, I'm, I'm trying to advocate for our employees. And they deserve what they deserve. And there's been several implications of this that I didn't think was right. And I let DPI know about it. And some things have gotten changed and some things have not. But, you know, if somebody's in their last four years, their salary matters. Their retirement's based on it. And to try to, in my words, cheat them out of a half of a year's raise within their last four years, you know, for somebody that's 12 years into their career, that it doesn't matter. But somebody that's 26 to 30, it makes a difference. And if you're in your last two or three years, it makes a huge difference. And so we're glad that they changed course on that and are making this subject to retirement. And it's counting toward their maximum salaries in their last four years. So, yeah, just trying to advocate for our, our staff, they work hard. There will be some budget implications as we come forward. Some of these things that she mentioned are for everyone, some are just for state-paid positions. And so we have some locally paid positions that will come to keep them funded evenly, fairly, equitably, choose your adjective wisely. We'll take a, a hit on our local budget to do that. So there will be some local budget implications moving forward. Every time that happens, every time a local, state budget is passed, that happens. And we haven't had to deal with that in four years. I wish we had dealt with it for four years, but it's all going to come to a head at once. And, and then there's other things that we're still waiting on further guidance about. The state is looking at a leveling, not leveling really, but an adjustment to supplements for state, for state employees. That, that's still a lot of information left, left to come on that as well and how that impacts our employees. But we are, and, and again, she mentioned something very quickly a while ago, and she mentioned it thoroughly. So I'm not, I'm not saying that she didn't do a good job of it. But realize that people working 15 to 24 years do not get a raise. And let that sink in, that is what the General Assembly salary scale through DPI is, is that when you hit year 15, you get a raise. You do not get another adjustment on the salary scale until your 24th year. Then you, that, you get one that year, and that is your final salary adjustment for the rest of your career. There's something wrong with that. I would suggest that if you're in a room with a legislature, to let them know that not many people would think that they're 15 years into their career and they get one raise for the next 15 years. And that, we do know that in your second 15 years, costs will go up. And that's a discouragement to stay in the profession. And so, again, that's just something to keep in mind. Again, she covered that earlier, but it, that is, that is something that I think needs to be adjusted. And like, what they've done is, North Carolina was trailing the nation in beginning teacher salaries. So what the General Assembly intentionally did is they front-loaded the money to the beginning teachers to try to get them up to a higher salary quicker. But it's at the expense of the veteran teachers ever getting another raise. And so where they say it's an average 5% raise, there are teachers that won't get a dime. And so that, that's very discouraging. Now, there's a lot of bonus money here, and so that, that will help them now. But is that bonus money going to be here in five, eight, 10 years? And probably not unless they come up with other reasons to call it bonus money. But then, so there are people that are not real happy right now, and I, and I understand that. And we want to advocate for all of our staff a, as well because, because they deserve it. Again, we have, we've seen the bit fruits of the labor tonight of a, a lot of hard-working teachers, and we want them recognized.
I want to ask, is the bonus is prorated too?
The one that they're receiving tomorrow is prorated? Yes, ma'am, that one is. Some, sometimes they are and sometimes they're not. So that, the thousand or the $1,500 one is a prorated basis on the bonus there.
On the years of experience?
That will be on the percent of employment.
Percent of employment. So if you're, if you're a half-time employee, you would get half of the bonus. If you're a 75% employee, you would get 75% of the bonus.
So it wasn't based on years?
No, ma'am.
Oh, well, I, I just didn't understand.
First year to 30 years, if you're both a full-time employee, you would get the same bonus.
So if you're 24 years in, say you're 26 years in or whatever, do you, you're still flat though?
24 to 26, it's $200 a month difference maybe?
Are you talking about the salary scale?
The salary scale.
The salary. Scale.
I don't have it in front of me.
You said after.
It's $200 difference between a month, difference between 24 and 26.
24 is $50,650, for example, on the bachelor.
So go back to 15.
15 is $50,650. You go to 26 years, it's $52,680. But when you look at those steps from 15 to 24, it's the same.
The same number every year.
It is so sad.
And then they get a $200 raise, and they keep that same number through the end of their career.
And for example, beginning teachers this year were $35,000. The, you, you're in, at the beginning, well, last year, and what we started, but we're going to be adjusting it to $35,460 with the new scale.
Again, we go back historically. I came to the state of North Carolina in 1999. And I came and worked in Guilford County, which pays a nice supplement, and I think I'd had four years' experience. And I want to say I made $29,000 as a fourth-year teacher. So a first-year teacher making 35, the state has, again, front-loaded the money to help the beginning teacher, but it's come at the expense of the veteran teacher. So they've helped one group, but without helping the other. In, in my opinion, I'm sure the General Assembly would differ with me, but.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to discussion item F, COVID-19 update, Dr. Rice.
Board, I've got on the screen the update data as of 12:37 this afternoon. The county data did come in later than that, and I do have it updated. There's a packet stapled and hole-punched thing at your desk tonight, but it's also on the board behind us. There's 230 active cases in the county, 15 active cases in our staff, 33 active cases in our students. And the percentages are there. With school spread, I haven't reported on this in the last month or two, I realize that. Forty-six of our 553 cases have been the result of school spread, that's 8.3%. But of the 1,624 students placed in quarantine, only 46 have ended up testing positive. That is 2.8%. That's still below the 3% threshold that we've been talking about all year. So that percentage has stayed very normal. Also, last time I shared with you the vaccination rates of people with at least one shot. And last month, I said, reported for our county that it was around 50 kids, that is up to 214. So again, while that's nowhere near the majority of the students in Stokes County, I thi, I think it does show that the board used wisdom in delaying our masking optional policy till January to give people that want that opportunity a chance to get a shot, and more people are taking advantage of that. So I have those numbers there. Again, as you would see, if we were doing our masking optional policy as of today, tomorrow, we would have two schools that would be in the red and would be required to wear masks over the 5% threshold. And that would be Walnut Cove and Pine Grove. There were some other schools in there last week, but they have now cycled out and are back below the 5%. Our week at a glance, if you will, you can see there the numbers for the county, for staff and for students, they're on page three. And then as our running total again of students and staff by day going into quarantine due to positive test results or due to quarantine. And then, I couldn't get one graphic to load today, but you can see that in our county data, there is a spike recently, which we're all aware of after the holidays, which has changed the projection a little bit. Still not as steep as what we just experienced, but a more flattening. But still, an increase is what's expected in the next two weeks. But that data is of last week on the 6th. Again, I checked today, and that is the most recent data. They had not updated it today. Are there any questions over about the COVID numbers?
What was the number you said? The total quarantine cases that we've had?
That is up on page one. And we have had 1,624 students placed in quarantine as of like 12:30 today. There were.
1620?
1624.
And how many have tested positive?
46 of those ended up being positive. So about 1580 were quarantined for no reason, out of a precaution.
Okay.
And that, again, is very frustrating to educators when we see that much face-to-face instruction being missed. I understand the precautionary nature of this, but I just, as an educator, it just, it makes me sick that that many kids have missed, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 days, depending on when they were contacted.
Now, had anything reduced again or no with the quarantine times and being able to test?
There's been no change in the quarantine guidance here in recent updates.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the board for Dr. Rice? Okay. All right, let's move on to our action agenda. Action agenda, item A, approval of personnel and coaching. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the personnel and coaching as presented.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, have a motion from Mr. Rogers and a second from Ms. Knight. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Action agenda, item B, approval of policy 7,000 series. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 7,000 series policies.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Brunt, second from Mr. Rogers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Brings us to our information and announcements. Item A, announcements, I think Mr. Jones?
Board, before we turn it over to Mr. Jones, one announcement item that's not on here. This is Ms. Dillon's last meeting tonight. She is going to be enjoying retirement, going from the Christmas holidays into a full-time holiday of retirement. And Ms. Dillon has been a champion for our students during this time of COVID. And thousands, as I used to report to the board, thousands and thousands of students were fed when we were not in school. And in a time when employees are hard to get in every walk of life, you go into any store, restaurant, they are facing staffing challenges. And Dr. Taylor, myself, Ms. Dillon, almost daily at times, were meeting, trying to make sure that we had staffing in each kitchen ready to go. And also kept us financially viable. If you remember from our last audit, that we did not go in the hole during that time. And in a time where food shortages were coming in, bag shortages were coming in, paper plate shortages were coming in, her and her staff, under her direction, made countless trips to Sands Club to get donations from places to make sure that our students were fed. There were times I had to look at Ms. Cheek. Principals were recruited to serve meals in the summer. And you know, everybody jumped in when Ms. Dillon let us know where we needed to go and people did what they were supposed to do and to help students. And so she was an absolute champion during that time. And I know that that didn't come without some bumps and bruises along the way as well. But I'd like to thank her very publicly, thank her and her department for what they did, for making miracles happen, make sure that students were fed during COVID and beyond. So thank you very much, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Board members, just a reminder, our next meeting is the tent. So that is after the holiday season, Christmas and New Years. I do want to wish you and your families a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and to all of our students, our staff and their families, we wish them a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year on behalf of Stokes County Schools. Also, I want to remind you of the superintendent's breakfast that will be held tomorrow and the transportation breakfast that will be held on Thursday of this week. And then I have also included in a blue folder that I placed at your workstation is a hard copy of our athletic schedules for the winter sports season. So other than that, that's all that I had this evening.
Just part of that winter sports schedule, I don't know if it came in early enough to get in there. The Frank Spencer Classic, the Forsyth County Schools Tournament that they do each year is before Christmas this year. It's usually after Christmas. And they put together a first-round game of North and South to be held, I'm sorry, West and South at North Forsyth. So we've got three directions in there. But the game will be held at North Forsyth against West and South next Tuesday? But it should be in there, but we have another county game coming up at North Forsyth High School. On Tuesday night at 7 o'clock, I believe.
Okay. All right, I think that wraps us up for tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Ms. Rogers, you make the motion to adjourn. Ms. Messick made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. I hope everyone has a very Merry Christmas.
And a Happy New Year.
We will see everyone in January.